All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this public hearing order. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public regarding the tentative 2024's county budget. Before we get started, if you have a cell phone in your hand, please put it on mute. And at this time, I'll ask Tammy to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing on tentative 2024 county budget. Notice is hereby given that Green County Legislature shall meet on the 30th day of October 2023 at the Castle Little School Auditorium, 345 West Main Street, Castle, New York, at 6 o'clock PM for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the tentative budget, which contains the exemption impact report, real property tax law, section 495 of said county for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024. And further notice is hereby given that the Budget Officer of the Legislature is in the process of preparing the tentative budget for the county for fiscal year beginning on the 30th day of January 2024, together with statement of the estimated revenues and expenditures for said county for the fiscal year 2024. And further notice is hereby given that copies of the tentative budget with containment exemption impact report, real property tax law, section 495, will be filed in the office of the Bureau for the Green County Legislature at the County Office Building 411 Main Street, 4th Floor, Castle, New York, where they may be inspected and procured by any entity through their regular business hours and on the county's website by October 17, 2023. Pursuant to section 359 of county law, the maximum salary that may be fixed and payable during said fiscal year to members of the Green County Legislature and to the Chairman thereof respectively are hereby specified as follows. Members of the Legislature eat eighteen thousand seven fifty, Chairman of the Green County Legislature eight thousand four forty.
Hey, thank you, Tammy. Then now we have the County Administrator Sean Roden for a brief PowerPoint presentation on the tentative 2024 budget. I need a final one.
Does it like the more? Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, and people behind me. I apologize for my back, but bear with me. The presentation tonight is somewhat of this historical or as a routine, I should say, presentation, a general outline of the overall budget. I know that some of these charts are sometimes hard to view from the back. That's why there's hard copies. I think there's not even a hard copy. There's some in the back hopefully printed enough. This is a traditional page that we call page one. It just gives a kind of a thirty thousand foot view of the overall fund or the number of checkbooks that are in the county. Program of creation level that has been declared as the existing budget from 2003 to the proposed budget of 2024. Now directing to the bottom of the page is hopefully mine for you. There you go. The overall tax impact from one fiscal year to the next remains unchanged, um, even though the expenses in the overall budget have upped. It's the basic formula, if you will, that I've been referred to a couple of times. Any budget is going to start with the total appropriation level or expenses minus any revenues that come in from various departments. And then fund balance, fund balances is an explanation of surplus funds from previous years. So that the expenses minus the revenue minus the fund balance would then equal the tax levy. Um, and it's demonstrated the tax levy that remaining the same. And that is the fifth year in the world of a ten dollar amount uh, will be for the uh, calendar year of 2022. Again, this is hard to read, so this is a page that is required by the state as per the legislation adopted for the tax levy maximum impact. I think everybody is aware of the state um has a formula that the levy may not change by a value of two percent or the rate of inflation which ever is lowered. So this is a calculation that is made by the state and it actually represents the fallacy of the legislation. Because if you look right here, this county could meet the two percent tax gap legislation by raising taxes five point two percent. That must be new math because I don't understand that stuff really. Um, and then if you just increase the budget by two percent, pretty simple math, the tax levy could only increase by five hundred and forty six thousand dollars. But again, in this case, there is no change to the overall levy. We we focus this for purposes that people understand the balance of ones that we could have raised. This page you cannot read at all. I certainly understand that. And it's probably one of the more important pages of the presentation because it indicates how the overall unchanged levy will be divided by fourteen towns based upon each individual town's equalization rate. That equalization rate is a computation made by the state which is meant to true up, if you will, or to convert assessed valuation to market valuation. Again, that is a number that the state computes. And we go from a high of one hundred percent value and the town of Athens that recently completed their townwide reassessment. Um, not to pick anybody, but there's some pretty low values there that then will exacerbate how the monies are raised across the fourteen towns. So again, even though the overall dollar amount is not changing, twenty seven remain unchanged. How it is distributed amongst the fourteen pounds becomes a computation based upon that equalization rate change. For the last couple of years, the uh the impact has basically been split between the fourteen towns and this year it's exactly seven towns will see a reduction in the in the county tax levy and seven towns will see an increase in their respective uh, charge for the overall dollar amount that doesn't change. I know that might be a little bit confusing and I'm certainly able to take questions accurately. So that conversion is based upon real market values. But I think everybody understands in the last twenty four months or so, thirty six months maybe, the real estate market has really blossomed, really run up considerably. This chart this chart demonstrates the actual growth, just the increase in valuation from one fiscal year to the next. And you can see that's driven by not only the value of real estates. I think we all have examples of neighbors selling houses and probably sold for above multiple of real estate listings. And then this represents that gap between what market value is to assess valuation. Now that's a little bit confusing because that's just the growth. If you look at the value, and again, this chart you cannot visualize by the distance. But if you look at the top very piece of these graphs, a little gray line. And that little gray line represents the actual growth in new construction that occurred in any of these fiscal years. So that's a new house. That's an expansion. That's something that was new that does not reflect just the change in market conditions. But actually reflects something new coming into the community, being a subdivision, commercial property, et cetera. We need to grow those greater. We need to get those numbers higher uh, in order for future tax rates to be held available by having a larger pie, if you will. It's fair to say though that development needs infrastructure. Um, and this county needs more water and sewer lines in order to have true new growth. And that will be going forward with further extend the overall property tax base. This then just repeats the overall valuation. You can see it was fairly incremental from nineteen to twenty one, and then we began to see the jump. If I could fully explain that, the rationale or the reasons for those jumps, I don't think I'd be a Green County that might be watching on NBC. I don't know. Those numbers are just monster increases. And of course, when you sell your house, it's a good story, but maybe that's the one thing you sell your from your buyers. Now we get to expenses. Now this is the total expense level of the budget for twenty four. So in total, we have approximately a hundred and thirty one million dollar budget. Again, there was some fairly incremental consistent changes. Previous years were now in the last two, there's been a fairly significant increase driven by the unusual inflationary factors that were not only occurred nationwide, usually and locally. Um, and then that then has an assembly expansion of everything that we consume. The gasoline in our vehicles, the electric terminal lights on, payroll and benefits. So overall, there is a large increase, probably a larger increase than I've seen in our budgets. Almost nine million dollars from one year to the next. But that increase was able to be absorbed by both the revenue stream and the fund balance stream. I'll go back to that chart where I outlined expensive minus revenue minus fund balance equals the levy. So even though the budget has gone up, the levy did not because in the equation factors of increased local revenues and increased fund balance, fund balance meaning the surplus from previous years will be then rolled over into the ensuing year's budget. As a snapshot is where the money is going to, broken down by expense levels. You can see these individual, these individual items. And driven by the inflationary factor that I mentioned, but also we have hired more people in the last two years. The defender has seen an increase in personnel, the sheriff's department has seen an increase. And even though those expenses were offset by revenues, this is just to look at the expense side of the equation as it's broken down by these subsections, if you will. New York State Retirement, I want to touch upon this for the twenty fourth fiscal year is running as long as twenty five. Vehicles and equipment, as we turn over our fleet, we have a large fleet that needs to have all the vehicles turned over and we're trying to get to a point uh, where we can max out or get to a level where we can annually change out the fleet that's functional off the lessons which reach out into the field. Health insurance, I have a follow up draft on that. Assigned counsel, for those of you who follow the legal world, the state increased the dollar value that is paid to attorneys for court appearances from, I believe, seventy five dollars a dollar to a hundred and fifty eight dollars a dollar. So that's the expense that got pushed down to the county from the state. Then we have workers' compensation. We had a couple of injuries in the last two years that are now coming through the system. Then we have general ability repairs, et cetera. Also, one of the big ones that I did not, so to be in the skip, the fractional level, there's a large increase of the overall value of Department of Social Services, Medicaid, and other such expenses. Um, but we, in that lineup level, there's also decreases that happen from one year to the next, uh, which means that the increase was almost totally on the state mandated service level. Health insurance, a large expense overall for the budget, although incrementally it has not increased similar to the other expense line driven by inflation. Uh, even though we insure around fourteen hundred and fifty people totally are overall expenses and have not really gone up considerably, certainly as you compare to inflation on our other lineup. I think the good news there, even though there's an increase in the overall level of insurances, um, this covers, when I said fourteen hundred people, this would cover our existing employees, the employee spouse, the children of the employees as well as our retirees. And I'm happy to report that our retirees are living longer and they're healthier. And they're staying there longer, which adds to the overall increase. That's a good news for a male. Now the challenge, uh, New York State Retirement System is going through what I would call an overhaul. The New York State Retirement System is controlled completely by Mr. DiNapoli, who has complete control of all decisions made by the retirement system. And you can see the large increase that's happened in the last three years or will happen because that's last November, fiscal twenty five, and I'm going to get back to future budgets. Um, this is a programmatic change by the controller changing the investment portfolio, the entire retirement system, I believe, that's how we two hundred and sixty billion, I want to say totally, by the decisions made to change investment portfolios and to reduce the actuarial return rate from seven and a half percent return that was necessary back in these years to now a five point nine percent return. So as you lower the investment yield on an annual basis, that pushes money down to the communities who are members of the retirement system and therefore our costs go up. So there's a fairly significant increase in three to four here. But then you're going to be already have an estimate for fiscal twenty five that's going up considerably as those policies are changed by the state in New York State world. That's just another BP of the previous mention on the social services and the changes and pushed down by the state to localities. If there's a good news story here, um, it's we have made tremendous improvements in our solid waste operations, the transfer stations, our recycling efforts. For many years, you could see that there were operating deficits. Um, but the combination of improvements to facilities and changes in budget capitalizations, we are now getting to the point where that operation is nearly a push into the overall operation of the county, of the county budget, requiring much less of a levy than it was before. That's a very good story. And I hope that story will leave us better in the future. Now to flip the page, go to on the revenue side, though all those previous companies were made upon expenses. Our single biggest revenue in the county is the sales tax. And you can see the fairly somewhat consistent change until the Supreme, what's known as the Supreme Court Wayfair decision, uh, that applied the sales tax on all purchases for where the shipping address is, not the shipping from address. So if you buy something online and you bought it in Chicago, previously that was not applied to the sales tax. With the Wayfair Supreme Court decision, your address is the determining factor as to where the sales taxes are applied, and that has seriously increased the overall gains which then is used to offset the expense increases and therefore able to maintain the levy at the current level for the fifth year in a row. So we're estimating an increase in the sales tax from one fiscal year to the next by four million dollars. It's a lot of increase. But our activity supports that. And I'll also come back to sales tax when I do future budget projections in a moment. But that's a good increase, um, and it helps balance the overall budget. Again, going back to that chart at the beginning of the presentation, expenses minus revenue minus fund balance, people are levied. So we talked about revenues. Now we're going to move to the fund balance. Again, you can see a little bit of consistency in the fund balance contributions in the last few years. But now because of annual surpluses, we now roll that money back into the next year's budget. And there's a significant increase this year. We've increased the contribution by six hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the current year's budget. Again, this increased volume of money is then used to maintain the fund balance at a level or an amount not to go up again. And when we talk about fund balance history, this is a record. It's no different than sales tax where fees received by the county clerk. Once we build that dollar amount into the formula, that dollar amount needs to be repeated on an annual basis in order for that formula in order to remain intact. The ability to do that is by virtue of maintaining our annual surpluses in the budget. Our philosophy is that we are we are liberal in our expense estimates, meaning we always function on the assumption of one hundred percent employment. On the revenue side, we never go to exceed, we never go to an exceeding amount above estimates on revenue. So one becomes high, one becomes low, and added together, you will always have a surplus in your budget. And I would recommend in the future that you never push either one of those things in the opposite direction, thereby reducing any possibility of an annual surplus. So a fund balance, but take a look at the history of the fund balance, suppose that every ten year the growth, but in the three parts of our three checkbooks that the county has, the combined fund balance contribution, I took a straight line there. You can see a fairly significant increase. Again, driven by the annual surplus that we're able to settle together at the end of each fiscal year, and then we plow that money back into the budget all with the goal of maintaining the levy that that the neutral point uh, for the next, for the next fiscal year. So a little bit of summation here. You can see the levy since twenty fiscal twenty, now proposed at twenty four uh, remaining unchanged. I will go back to that equalization rate uh page. Even though that levy is unchanged, how the impact is calculated to fourteen towns, it's a different story altogether. Now, future budgets. We're not going out of business, so we should understand where where the ship of state, if you will, is moving to in the ensuing years. So here's the proposed budget. I want you to note the colors here. So the white, blue, and the bottom there, there's your levy. So once again, year five, twenty seven million dollars, and what we're, what we're, our goal is to leave that number unchanged. I think I'm not a surgeon. That leave that number unchanged, that the citizen is not paying more in the property tax. The gray line, gray bar graph, those are the internal departmental revenue, everything from sales tax, projects, I'm sorry, exclusive of sales tax. But just the normal things that happen within every department. Now the green line is coming after that fund balance. So the goal was let's, what happens if we maintain the fund balance at that five point six million dollars? Leaving us then with how much money is needed from the sales tax in order to keep the budget levy flat. Well, as you can see, as we project, we balanced here for twenty four. Now, if we project out for twenty five and twenty six, we're beginning to see a deficit. So our projection of expenses as they convert and relate to revenue, we begin to see a gap. Now, how do we then adjust again? Same expense projections, but you'll notice forty one million dollars in sales tax, five, six, fifty seven, twenty seven. Move forward, we believe we can increase the sales tax contribution to the twenty five budget to forty three million dollars. This is really with a very small deficit that can easily be handled by tweaks in various department expense level. Also based upon fairly conservative projections here on the expense line, particularly as impact of the state may shift down to us as the state is cooperating with its own, the last number I heard was a thirty nine billion dollar deficit that's going to be over the course of the next three years. So certainly as the state begins to wrestle with that, I certainly expect the state to shift more expenses down to counties. Um, so right now, that projection does not presume much of an increase. If we go further though, and maybe use more draconian estimates, then that red gap begins to get a little bigger. The three colors in the bottom are remaining the same. For the sake of argument, the CD would say, okay, we're going to keep the sales tax contribution even. But then I get a little bit bigger, but a manageable deficit for twenty five, something you can still handle in common. So at this point, my preliminary projection for the fiscal twenty five would be another zero on the property tax levy. But as I get to twenty six and fearing either a national economy collapse or a state shift in local expenses, we get a much bigger budget deficit that we'll have to deal with in the next probably twelve months. Like the cycle, you're always, you're always auditing last year, executing this year, and planning for next year. So at some point during the twenty five year, we're going to have to give a better look at fiscal twenty six and then determine do internal revenues have any opportunity for increase? Does the fund balance have any opportunity to increase? And then what would be the maximum sales tax that we can estimate before we push the envelope too far? If you put too far, and this happened to this county back in oh eight, oh nine, I know that's ancient history. But the national and local economy took a dive, went to a bear market, and this county lost about ten percent of its sales tax volume in one year. So we would lose ten percent in one year, we would lose four point one million dollars in twenty four, four point three, et cetera, for those two years, and that sales tax can rock like a stone. We have no control over it. It's totally driven by the economy. And that's why we're very conservative in how much we estimate to be used from one fiscal year to the next. Okay, that's final wrap up. Again, fiscal twenty four, no change, five years. Uh, looking into that year, uh, we saw those deficit projections. I think it's manageable, but technically we could get another year, uh, so year six would be flat again. But then the caveat for those estimates are again, the decrease in the sales tax receipts, shift from the state, which we cannot control, also from the state unfunded mandates that may be a little verbose. And then, of course, the national and or regional economy, the Fed continues to raise interest rates. How will that affect mortgage, which affects everything from redoing the kitchen to buying appliances, et cetera, all of them factor into the sales tax computation. And of course, maybe the elephant in the room, or I think grill. Grill in the room, uh, the county is about to undertake an evaluation of the countywide annulatory system. Um, that could result in additional expenses that comes to the county as we consider if either regional consolidation within the county, countywide consolidations, support for local towns and facilities as they wrestle with the annulatory system. And remember, uh, when you don't have a hospital, you better have a good annual system. With those factors all in total, um, really wrap up my presentation this evening. And at that point, Sheriff, I will turn it over to yourself and whoever has any question.
All right, thank you, John. We'll open this up to the public for any questions that you might have, and I would just ask that if you'd like to speak, please come down to the podium here. Uh, state your name so we can keep your name on our record. And I'd also ask, when you're recognized, please state for the record which part of the tentative budget you wish to speak to. This is a public hearing. It's not a question and answer period. It's the legislature to hear comments from the public with regard to the tentative budget. However, if there are some questions that we may answer, we will try to answer them for you. And with that, we'll start the hearing. Would there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the tentative budget for Green County? Would there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the tentative budget for Green County for the year two thousand twenty four? Here is a.
I did sign in, I'm here, but off and down. Um Joe Hizzo, one seventy Spring Street, Catskill, New York. Five twenty, nine, one, three, five, four, twenty nine.
Which part of the budget are you looking at?
The whole budget.
The whole budget. I'm gonna be here a while.
Five minutes? Mr. Martinez.
I was gonna give you three, you better take it.
Anyway, I thank you very much again for allowing me to speak. I uh would like to also comment on um and actually um make note of Mr. Martinez's. Uh comments and in his bu- budget um message, which obviously is not on the screen. But he had a good point to make. And what he was saying was that he. Is unsure. What state of New York is going to do. To towns, towns and villages. In the next coming years. And so he did have a caveat. Um in the budget message. Saying that we need to be diligent. And we need to make sure that we look at all the aspects. Of the budget, now paraphrasing a little bit, but I think Charlie could run that message, because that was very important. Uh for that to be in the budget list. So I've done some analysis and some uh review, you might have to take my glasses off because if we get old, we can't. Yeah, we can't read too well. So uh. I went to the state controllers website. And you, I'll give you the address if you'd like to take a look at it. And they looked at the county um revenues. From two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty one, that's the information I have on the site. And over that growth period. Our revenues only grew one point nine percent. But what's more interesting. Is that our federal aid, aid from. United States government actually went down by five percent. So the county has actually lost. Money. When they're looking at program, federal programs, state programs. By over five percent. And that's in ten years. So that's something that the county is gonna have to. Uh look at. Also, in. Expenses. The county. Over ten years. The expenses have only grown by one point two percent. And. That's great, that's great. And so, that's a benefit, that's something that you should be proud of. So now let's get to fund balance. My favorite, my favorite study. And this is from the. Outside orders report. For two thousand point two. And. It indicated. That. County did not use its fund balance. In two thousand twenty two. Budget year. In fact. They exceeded. The actual expenditures. By over fourteen million dollars. So you're not using your fund balance. You make a big issue of fund balance, but you're not using it. You're growing the fund balance. And when you take the expenditures. And you look at revenue. Without fund balance, you're making fourteen million dollars. So. What does that indicate? One. Revenue has increased, basically it's in the sales tax. And expenditures are decreasing. So when you're doing your budget. Something's not adding up. When you have an increase in expenses and increase in revenue. Doesn't indicate to me that's a very sound budget. Now. The orders report had some good news. And that the county has extended its net positive value. Which means over a long period of time. The county is, is doing well. Is extended it up to over a hundred and seventeen million dollars. That's great for the county because what you're doing is you're preparing. For future years, and that's a good thing. The problem is. It isn't reflected. In the taxes that you are asking the residents of Green County to pay. Now, I know, I know that. In the last four or five years. There hasn't been a tax increase, which, which is good. But that doesn't affect. All the towns. In fact, as Mr. Groban mentioned. There were seven towns. That their taxes are gonna increase. So that's not, that's not, that's not a tax. That's, that's not a tax, straight line. If seven towns have a decrease and seven towns have an increase. And the increases in Carroll, Cuxia, Greenville, Alka, Hunter, Jewett and Wyndham. Especially Hunter, especially Alka, Hunter, Jewett and Wyndham. Which is a big contributor to sales tax. And you're telling the residents up there, wow, you gotta pay more, but we want your sales tax. So. I said to myself, well. How much do we really have in fund? Now I'm talking about fund balance, not talking, I'm talking about not restricted fund balance, because restricted fund balance is. But there is unrestricted fund. And I've had correspondence with the treasurer. And county administrator. About the size of the fund balance. And. The fund balance in total. At the end of two thousand twenty two. Was sixty six million dollars. Now, some of that is restricted. And some of that is restricted by county. So this. Sixty six million dollars, you're gonna only use four million dollars to use taxes. So. Where is the other fund balance? You know, it's like living um. That show. A cone of silence. You're living in a cone of silence. Which means. You're not being transparent to the taxpayers. Green County. Not you in particular, but the reporters. And the residents of Green County should know. What's in those fund balances. They should be told. That if I'm safe, if I have. I saved forty two million dollars in fund balance. That I'm not gonna use to reduce property taxes. Why is that forty two million dollars even useful? And that is incumbent upon this legislature. To say what that is. Not that it's wrong. Not that it's wrong, because you should be planning. But you should be telling the taxpayers it's their money, as the treasurer always likes to say. It's their money and they should know what kind to use. So. I just did a brief calculation and I'm sorry. I may be wrong. But your sales tax. As Mr. Groban. Presented. About twenty six or twenty five, twenty two. Is so underrated. It's unbelievable. You're already. In two thousand twenty two, I have forty six million dollars in sales tax. And you're only projecting forty one million. This year, right now, according to the budget document, you're already ten million dollars. In a surplus, without using fund balance. Your revenues and expenses are. Your revenue has exceeded your expenses by over ten million dollars. So. I'll end my comments by saying. And if you would. Increase the fund balance that you have budgeted. By one, two million dollars. It would be no county, I'm sorry, no town in Green County. That would have a tax. And that means those mountain top towns. Who contribute greatly to sales tax. Greenville and Carroll. Which is also having a decrease, but also getting. So I'm asking you. Like it. You go back and look at the fund balance that you're using for the budget. A million dollars is not a lot of money compared to the money that's coming in. But again, Mr. Groban is right. You have to be careful about how you're using. But you have to be careful about the fact that you're not using. And I certainly would like to know. And I'm sure the public would like to know. What are you gonna be using? For that restricted fund balance. And I thank you very, very much. For listening to me, as you. Thank you, and also, one other thing. As Mr. Linger knows, and I welcome that. That the new Baltimore service station. Was closed. For a long period of time. So sales tax generated by that, that Baltimore service. Not in these numbers, they're open now, they're gonna start generating. So you have to, please, please, take a look. At those towns that are having an increase. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Welcome.
Alright, I'm just gonna make a quick statement about that rate, that rate is not decided by Green County. That number comes from the New York State Department of. Of taxation and finance. The other thing is if we lower towns. We lower the tax rate, that number, that line will not be straight, no matter what we do. There will always be some towns that are lower than other towns that year.
That's not true.
That is.
That is not true. Equalization rate. Comes from the state of New York. Correct, the amount you're going to tax comes from you. If you lower the amount you're going to the tax, tax, that affects equals, that equalization rate will then be recalculated. To come up with a new tax rate. Yes, so I'm telling you now, I don't wanna sit here arguing, I appreciate your remarks, but you're absolutely incorrect. You are correct about the tax, about the equalization.
Oh, there is, right, right?
Point nine?
Yes, no? Um. The, the equalization rates are established by the New York State DTF. The levy is distributed by equalizing everybody's, every town's. Tax value. To a hundred percent to create a. To a portion of levy amongst the fourteen pounds. And. Then from that apportionment, we calculate the tax rate per town.
So the dollar value of that does not affect the equalization rate?
The comment I would make is look at last year's full value tax rate, which is in that apportionment sheet of the presentation. Um this year's there, I don't, I don't have last year's with me, but I believe our. Full value tax rate dropped from three dollars and twenty eight cents to two seventy something.
Two seventy one?
Yes, you're absolutely right, right?
So I, you have to look at the charts that. Mr. Groban presented. To. Over those five years or six years, depending on what charts you were looking at. What was the full value tax rate? Uh Sean, you can correct me, I think I provided to you the last five years that it was a decrease over five years.
Correct.
Right, it's correct.
Mike and I had this discussion about a week ago.
Two seventy, the tax rate at full value right now is two seventy one. Based on. Twenty seven million, three hundred and nine dollars, three hundred and seventy dollars in tax. If you reduce. Twenty seven million, three hundred and nine thousand by a million dollars. Take the full value, which is given to you by the state. The tax rate will drop down to two dollars and sixty one cents. You take that two dollars and sixty one cents and apply that against each town, you will find. That the mountain house, mountain top towns. Will have no tax increase and there'll be more of a tax increase in the towns that already got a tax increase. So I'm, I'm just asking you to go back and tell me.
The red, and the red point, the red is going to stay the same and just gonna drop the total level. The red doesn't go.
Actually moves.
But it goes the same for everybody.
Yeah. So why give everybody a break?
That's, that's what we did with the eight point eight billion dollars.
Why, why you, why? I'm sorry, I don't, I'm getting. It, this is not, this is not the time. Nor do I think this, this legislation would be winning.
We have eight point eight billion dollars in increased spending from twenty twenty three.
You're, you're not gonna change budget. You're not gonna change what I'm asking you to look at. So there's no sense in me even here discussing other than the fact. That you're not being transparent with your fund balance. You're not telling the public what's in that fund balance. And like I said. It's like being in a cone of silence. This whole legislature will not say any. To the people of this county about their financial.
That's not, that's not true, that's not true.
That is true.
That is true. That was not, yes, you know, we were not.
I'm on, I'm on the board.
I'm surprised you didn't say that.
I know how.
I'm not saying a little inflammatory, so why don't we get him back?
That's it.
Accusatory, so that's, we should stop that one now.
Yeah.
Good idea. That's a good idea.
Have anyone else here tonight who wishes to be heard? In regards to the tentative budget for Green County for the year two thousand twenty four? Joe, I would just say that one of the things that came up this year, uh, that happened to come up after the budget was passed for. Was the state budget was passed, had a significant increase on county's end. For Department of Social Services. So we had to scramble to come up with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make up that monetary difference as well. So there's other reasons that we. Keep money in fund balance. Uh, I can tell you, and I think quite foolish, actually, when I first got on the board, it. Wanted to know exactly how much we had in the bank. To build a new jail, they've been talking about it for twenty years. And the answer was zero. There was nothing in the bank. They. Found that entire, did save some in a couple of years that we were. Getting in progress to build that facility, but it would have been nice if we had some money in the bank at the time. That was earmarked for that purpose, that's part of what we're doing with the fund balance right now. Um, and I do believe for the beginning of this year, we did, um, a resolution that established the fund balance.
I know, I know you didn't.
No, we are being transparent in what's there. You know, the amount stays.
Transparency. Not being transparent about what those towns would be, or how much money is in those towns. Anyway, I'm sorry, I, I'm asking you.
All right, last chance.
You always get into this issue, man.
Last chance, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the tentative budget for Green County for the year two thousand twenty-four? Nobody. Right, and I will thank everyone for attending the public hearing, and public hearing, now folks, thank you.